Start this regularly scheduled council meeting July 11, 2018. You'll June, June 11, 2018. It's June already. You'll notice the mayor's not here tonight, although we look the same similarly. He's having fun in Montreal, so I'm here in his place. You've got the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move it as approved. Any announcements by councillors? Any updates on July Canada Day, July 1?
Sure.
Okay.
So, just on behalf of Canada Day, we are busy planning with the committee. We've got an exciting venue. We're happy to report Nova Scotia Schooners Association will be back. Right down on King Street will be all the activities. We have food vendors this year, so mark your calendars. Activities start at 1:00, right up until the fireworks, so hope to see you there.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, we've got one delegation tonight. I believe Marg Forbes is going to introduce Sarah Eisner to us. So it's the Nova Scotia Heritage Fairs, as I understand it.
Thank you for allowing us to present, council and your honour. Your worship, I should say. I know that heritage fairs are not, is this turned on, Sandra? Heritage fairs are not anything new to most of you councillors. And in fact, I can look around the table and remember what project some of your children already had in a few years past. But every child in Nova Scotia does not have the opportunity to do a heritage fair project. And also, the ones in Bridgewater have opportunities to do them right up to grade nine, in fact, no matter what school you're in. But it doesn't happen automatically. It takes a lot of leadership at the school level and at the classroom level. And we happen to have a champion, of course, in Bridgewater Elementary. He is moving next door to the junior high for next year. But that's why your kids have probably benefited so much in the years past, because probably Bridgewater Elementary has been a shining example all over the province with the heritage fairs that they've accomplished and done in the past few years. And if you go online at something called Young Citizens, I think it's probably referred to in this brochure, isn't it, Sarah? It's Heritage Canada, but there's a link to Young Citizens. And you can look back on that for many years past and see videos of some of those projects. Every student hasn't done a video, but some of them do. And we've had a few from Bridgewater go to the Ottawa Conference in the fall, which would be the end of October. Unfortunately, there will only be four from across Canada chosen this year, because I don't know if the money was cut back at the federal level, but the people that dispensed the money for Heritage Canada changed, you know, there was a change. The only money they have is just what was left over from the 150th. Anyway, we were very pleased, we as in the Heritage Fair Society, it's the Nova Scotia Association, and we were very pleased to get some funding for a Canada summer jobs this year, and in the form of Sarah. And we only have her for, have had her for eight weeks. The eight weeks will come to an end next week, because we started the 1st of May. And then she's going on to Lordly House on the very next day after she finishes with us. So we're very, we were happy to have her for the, just for the eight weeks even, because it allowed us to have her for May and June, so she could get into the schools. Ideally, of course, she would have been all over the province, but with very little money or no money to operate with, as you can see, we were able to benefit here in this area, because she could get to our schools more easily. So, we've brought a little video she has done for you, and Sarah. Sarah's just finished her first year at St. Effex, by the way. And she can tell you some of the things that heritage fairs have done for her.
All right.
Okay. Hello? My name is Sarah Eisner. I've already been introduced, and this is Nova Scotia Heritage Fairs. I do have a video, but it would have to involve going online. And I helped a young citizen with their heritage fair project video, it was about Marie-Joseph Angelique, and yeah. It's locked, this room is locked. Good to be back. So, who can participate? Grades 4 to 9 are eligible to participate, but others in the community are obviously welcome too, as well. People especially, people related to museums can come in and judge. Community members can just come in and show students that they're a part of something important and bigger with the overall community. Teachers decide whether or not they can, like, whether or not they will implement the program. It's just for everyone. What is a heritage fair? A heritage fair is a unique opportunity to explore national, provincial, personal, and regional history. It also provides you with a chance to learn from history's mistakes, I guess, in the future, for the more you know, the more you can prevent in the future. MICMA, these are presentations that people have done in the past to give you an idea of what people have done. So it's not only Canada's history, it's also cultural history as well. So the MICMA. This shows the creativity aspect. So, the person made a UFO and did a project on the Shag Harbor instance, which may not have as much historical value as other projects, but it did provide tourism for that part of Canada, so it is important still. The Cree people, I like how this project has like artifacts and things like that, and a lot of good projects have artifacts. This one in the back also has primary source documents, and that would have taken a lot of research and probably going to numerous museums to find all of that. So, the kids doing heritage fairs develop very good research skills for future jobs and other opportunities in the future. Jacques Plante, heritage, like, personal heritage. Gaelic, Province House. ABCO, family. So as you can see, projects can be pretty much everything. Mines, and this is a good example of how it builds bilingual skills, because if you do a project in French, you have to present it in French and English, and the entire presentation for written is in French as well. So, it helps in pretty much every aspect of your life. This is a good example of how it shows creativity, as well as the kid dressed up in costume. A lot of good projects dress up in costume. A couple of weeks ago, we were at the provincial fair, and there was a person who did a project on Lucy Monde Montgomery. She dressed up as Anna Green Gables and was playing music on the piano. It was really impressive. So, Battle of the Atlantic. Why participate? So, for teachers, it incorporates many aspects of the education curriculum. But for just in general, it creates less biased generation, because of all the people we encounter while doing it, between those who have projects next to us, through people we interview, through community members that come in. And it grows and improves the workplaces and acceptance in the future. It also, the Young Citizens is especially important, because it allows people to get experience making storyboards, and that's not only important if you want to be like a filmmaker or something, but it also gives you experience in organization. And if you win that, people in the past have met the governor general in Ottawa, which gives them an interest in politics, because they feel like they're a part of it. And it's actually the hardest part of Young Citizens is trying to decrease the information, because when you originally make the project, it's often like 15 or 16 minutes of dialogue that we think is really important. So kids also learn how to summarize information, because it has to be four minutes long. So that's an important skill that a lot of the younger generation seem to be losing as well. When, it occurs from April to May. Preparations should occur prior to this date. And the heritage, the provincial heritage fair this year was on June 1st. Where, all over the province. And if you're interested, contact us. And these are Young Citizens videos from last year. Young Citizens videos for this year are actually up now, and voting starts tomorrow, so get in your votes. And this is it, unless you guys want to have any questions, or...
Sure. Any questions for council?
One.
Go ahead, wait.
Where's your costume? You was all dressed up the other night.
I was, but like, by the time I left the school, well, Marg's house, my dad left the school and I couldn't get into the costume room. And the costume had previously went back in, because it was used in one of the Young Citizens videos.
She did a great job at the museum the other night, commissioned, she committed, done a presentation for us. Great advisors and everyone was there. Great job, thank you.
I was dressed as a French soldier, so...
Any other questions for Sarah? No? Mr. Hurdle, do we have a copy of this presentation? We can put on the website and encourage people to vote, or?
Yes, we should make that possible, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Do we have a copy? Perfect, thank you.
Before we finish, I want to thank you, Sarah. But I also want to acknowledge that it's been wonderful to be able to have Sarah working out of the museum. Reason she was at my house, of course, as you know, Mondays, the museum is not open. So Mondays, sometimes Monday, she's been at my house, and sometimes she's been in the schools. So, it's been great. It's been a natural fit to have her there. And should also acknowledge that the strength of the heritage fairs in Bridgewater in particular, a lot of information has come from the museum and a lot of help over the years. I just want to make sure you people understand that, because we are very proud of the heritage fairs in Bridgewater, but it's not to be taken for granted. Every teacher doesn't bother to do it. And so we're very pleased that some teachers have, and we're trying to advocate for heritage in the curriculum, and also to promote more of them. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Marg. Thank you, Sarah. All right. Does any member of the public wish to address council at all? I assume you're saving it for later. Perfect, perfect. All right, moving on. You've got the minutes of, you know?
We are not available for approval at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will skip, we will skip. You're throwing all kinds of curves at me tonight. All right. We'll skip the approval of the May 28 minutes and move that to the next meeting. We've got three planning items, two of which are second readings and public hearings, so we'll begin the first one. So we'll, sorry, open the hearing for 210 York Street rezoning and development agreement. And you'll note, we'll note that the statutory requirements report has been circulated, and I guess we're looking to you, Nick, for an overview. Nick Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of council, for having me tonight. The first, this public hearing is for an application for rezoning, and an application for a development agreement, both at 210 York Street. Start with the development proposal. They are proposing the conversion of an existing electronic repair shop at 210 York Street, and that'd be a conversion to an office use, and also, an addition of 484 square feet, also for office use, resulting in a gross floor area of 1,232 square feet. The applications are twofold. There's requested amendments to the land use bylaw, specifically rezoning, and that is from special commercial C8 to downtown residential C4. Second part, second application, is for a requested development agreement, and that is an office use in the target zone, the R4 zone. Little background for the subject property, so 210 York Street has a long history of commercial uses. Prior to the electronic repair, it was an office for Mackenzie Bus Lines. The area is established by a well-defined, non-residential component. Policy context for the amendments, so again, the rezoning. For uses in the special commercial C8 zone, and this is from the municipal planning strategy, says these uses should be discontinued, and council shall consider rezoning them, or sorry, should these commercial uses be discontinued. Council shall consider rezoning them in accordance with the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. And the future land use map designates 210 York Street as medium-density residential, and that's a designation that enables the downtown residential R4 zone, or the medium-density residential R5 zone. Within the LUB, the land use bylaw amendments, there is strikeout required in Table T, and that are the, those are the permitted commercial uses in the special commercial C8 zone. So, what did say Robert Brown's Electronics, 210 York Street, and Electronic Repairs as the authorized use, that would be struck out. Second part is the zoning map. Again, rezone 210 York Street from C8, special commercial to downtown residential R4. The development agreement, which would be enabled through the rezoning process in the R4 zone, relies on policy statements of the municipal planning strategy. R27 states it shall be a policy of council to consider the following developments by development agreement in the residential, downtown residential R4 zone. Proposals for offices, when, the use is in an area influenced by substantial, well-defined and long-established, non-commercial land use component, and the maximum floor area within the building used for office space does not exceed 4,306 square feet. Both of those criteria are being satisfied with this development proposal. As part of the process, both for the land use bylaw amendments and the development agreement, a public participation meeting was held February 21st, here in the council chambers. Two adjacent property owners, plus the applicants who were in attendance. Overall, there was support for the proposal and change. Some concerns, or some discussion arose regarding parking, road safety, and traffic flow on York Street. Recommendation from the planning department, it's for council to give second and final consideration to the proposed map and text amendments to the land use bylaw, and approve the proposed development agreement, and approve a discharge instrument for the existing development agreement. I failed to mention that earlier. It wasn't in a slide, but there is an existing development agreement on the property registered in 2000, and that was for Robert Brown's Electronics. And that's it.
All right. Counsel, any final questions for Mr. Brown? No? Okay. Does the applicant or developer wish to make any comments?
No, Nick took all the good stuff, so...
All right. Does any member of the public wish to make any comments for or against the development? All right, hearing that, we'll close the hearing and ask council for directions. Looking for a motion. Counselor Thorburn.
Okay. I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater, upon the effective date of the rezoning of the subject property, enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at 210 York Street, in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated May the 31st, 2018, and that the mayor and chief administrating officer hereby authorize to execute this agreement only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider and request to sign the development agreement as a new application, and follow the entire process required by the municipal government act.
Perfect. Do we have a second, or? Counselor?
I'll second the motion.
Fugier, thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? Question been called. All those in favor? Those against? Motion is carried. And I believe there's a second motion on this particular item?
Yes, Part 2. That town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the proposed map and text amendments of the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A of Document 18-018B.
Okay. Do we have a second, or? Counselor Fugier again? Thank you. Ready for the question?
Question.
All right. All those in favor? Those against? Motion is carried. So the next step is that the decision will be published, which starts the clock on a 14-day appeal period, and changes take effect once that period has lapsed without appeal. There you go. All done. Congrats.
Thank you. Sneak out. I gotta get diapers.
Fair enough.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Bear with me, and we'll get back to where we were. Okay, so we've got a second reading and public hearing. Concurrent amendments to the MPS and LUB, developments up to 60,000 square feet by site plan approval in the group commercial zone. So we'll open the public hearing. Statutory requirements report has been circulated. Nick Brown, it's back to you.
Thank you.
All right.
So it's set by the deputy mayor. Application for municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments to the group commercial zone. So the application is to increase the threshold for site plan approval process within the group commercial zone from 49,998 square feet to 60,008 square feet. There are, sorry, there are 16 properties located in the group commercial zone. In the previous slide, I had an inset map on the east side of the river. There are two properties, 40 North Street, former South Shore Mall site, and 50 North Street, which is the Days Inn. On this side of the river, on the west side of the river, there are 14 others, including Lion's Den, the Plaza, the Liquor Store, McDonald's RVs, Bridgewater Motel, UPS Store/Sheikels Bottle Exchange, and 236 Dominion Street, the vacant lot that was recently purchased by Home Hardware, who, in fact, were the applicant for these changes to the land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy. Just to give you an overview of what this means through planning processes, as of right in the group commercial C4 zone, currently there are 34 permitted uses. So, any of those 34 permitted uses up to 15,080 square feet require development permit to be authorized, and then of course, any other applicable permits, like a building permit. And then, that's the as-of-right permission. They're often running, they're in the ground. Through the site plan approval process, we have those same 34 permitted uses, plus multi-unit residential with ground floor commercial, and those developments, so the site plan approval process is for developments between 15,080 square feet and 49,998 square feet. That process, the site plan approval process, has a notification portion where adjacent property owners within 30 meters receive a letter. There's criteria established in the land use bylaw for site plan approval, and once the, once the development officer approves the site plan, those neighbors who receive the letters have an ability to appeal the decision to council. So again, the proposed change increases the maximum size of development by site plan approval to 60,080 square feet. Through the development agreement process in that, in the C4 zone, those 34 permitted uses, if they are over 49,998 square feet, have to go through a development agreement, the notification to adjacent landowners and public, there's notification to adjacent landowners, and a public meeting process. Criteria is established in the municipal planning strategy, and it really does become a negotiation between the town and the developer, and is subject to council approval. The impact of the proposed change is, it applies to 16 properties, all 16 properties in the group commercial zone. The application may have been triggered by one specific development at 236 Dominion Street, but it does apply to all 16 properties, and that's very important. The changes would streamline development processes for larger developments, from approximately 50,000 square feet to approximately 60,000. Let's use the typo there. There's less opportunity for public input for larger developments, so if that increase goes to 60,000 square feet, more developments may be permitted through the site plan approval process. With the development agreement, the public process is larger. There is more opportunity for the public to get involved, and less variability from the land use bylaw. What that means is that through the development agreement process, there's, this allows to negotiate some of the terms. So, the requirements that a developer may have may become more flexible, or they may be more stringent, but there's a little bit of give and take with the development agreement process, whereas the site plan approval process is more rigid. It has to, the development has to comply with requirements of the land use bylaw. Again, the application was triggered by this site, 236 Dominion Street. This is just a visual of a very preliminary site plan. There was a public participation meeting held Thursday, May 10th, at the NSCC, and the reason I had the site plan in there prior to this slide, because, is because of the 19 in attendance, 15 of the public, concerns, discussion only related to the future Home Hardware site. And some of those concerns included noise from truck deliveries in the evening, after hours of operation, the impact of increased traffic on the surrounding neighborhood, and proposed trucking routes to the site. Plan impairment recommends that council give second and final consideration to the proposed concurrent text amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. And I do have a slide for next steps, I did last time, too. I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Mr. Brown? Does, go ahead, Counselor Graves.
Giving those other 16 properties the opportunity to expand, is that, do you see any problems with that moving forward?
It's my opinion that the site plan approval process is a really good process. It enables development that protects adjacent properties very well, and especially if those properties are residential. So, in my opinion, site plan approval is just as good a process as the development agreement process, in terms of how it impacts a neighborhood. Those property owners of the other 15 properties that are located in the group commercial zone are all in favor of the change. We received some phone calls from adjacent property owners, for example, on Aberdeen Road, who were more so just confused as to why they were receiving notification, but in the end, there were no concerns from those adjacent property owners, the ones we spoke to.
Any additional questions? No? Does the applicant wish to comment or speak? If you could just tell us who you are, that'd be great.
I will. Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Barbara Sutherland, and I'm the general counsel and director of real estate for Home Hardware, based out of St. Jacobs, Ontario. I welcome the opportunity to give you a little bit of insight into what we're going to be doing at 236 Dominion Street. So, everybody in the room is familiar with Gau's Home Hardware and with Gau's Furniture, and we're going to be combining them into one location at 236 Dominion. Tim Horton's is not moving, it's staying where it is. The nice thing about this is the building that we're building is going to be built to Home Hardware's current specifications and branding. It's going to be state-of-the-art. It's going to be our best store in the country when it's finished, because every time we build one, we improve just a little off the last one. So we're working really hard to make sure that the site is something to be proud of. It will be fully paved. We're going to have parking for over 140 vehicles. It's really important to Home Hardware that there be a separate truck entrance, that separate and distinct from our consumer entrance. So this site will have an entrance just for trucks. It will also have a very attractive fencing, a solid fencing and a vegetative screening up against all of the neighboring residences. The customers will find, I think, that they, they're going to have an easy entrance into the facility, they're going to have an entrance off of both High Street and Dominion, and there's going to be a specific area where they can go and pick up, and they won't be parking on the street, to pick up sofas. In total, we're looking at a gross floor area of 56,856 square feet. The hardware store retail will be about 30,500. The furniture will be approximately 1,300. There will be an attached garden center outdoor product display area of approximately 3,500 square feet. We're also putting in a community room, which is a room that members of the community will be able to use. So we're like, we always like to give back, and that's one of the ways we try to give back. And the screen repair facility, which is currently in the existing Home Hardware, will come up. The rest of the square footage that I haven't spoken to will be warehouse square footage. So, this is the same plan that you just saw that Nick put up. You can see on the bottom, you'll see... You can see on the bottom, you'll see an, an entrance. I don't think I have a, do I have a? Thank you. So down here, this is the truck entrance, separate and distinct from our consumer entrances, which are here and here. Our trucks will come in, this will be a loading area with two doors, go back in there, garbage containers, vegetative screening and fencing against those people's houses that I mentioned. This will not look like a box. We don't want Home Hardware to look like a big box. We're trying to break it up with some interesting architectural detail to make it look a little bit unique. So the, the top part that you're looking at will be what you see when you're driving along High Street. This is what you'll see when you're driving along Dominion Street. The word, word sets, I'm sure you can't read them, but these are more furniture focused, and these are more hardware focused up there. The back, the back will just be standard, straight, not offensive. I, I put this up because I wanted to emphasize how important the landscaping is to Home Hardware and recognizing that we're budding residential neighbors. We do not want the people to, to end up at the end of this going, I wish Home Hardware hadn't been there. We're, we're very good corporate and community citizens. So if you look along the houses here, we have put in an awful lot of vegetative screening, and we've also included a fence, same thing along there and there. There will be a propane tank up here, and there will be a transformer in there. But the people who are living behind the Home Hardware should feel confident that we are doing what is under your land use by law from a screening perspective. So the inside of the store, just giving you a little sneak peek at what you're going to get when you get to go shopping there next May, this will be the retail hardware portion here. This is all furniture. And this is my, the community room that I talked about. The rest of this back here warehousing, offices. This is the screen repair facility. And over here, this is where the attached outdoor display slash garden center will be. So it's basically combining all the great things about both of the stores into one super facility, and we're very proud of it, and it, it will be the best store in the portfolio. And that's all I have to say. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Council Thorburn.
I'm, I'm one of the houses in behind me that I built. And I'm a little bit disappointed that you're going to fence that off so I can't walk to the stores. Because even when the other business was there, I could walk over to the mall, go to Tim Hortons. And now, I mean, on our home tonight, the big fence is up. And I can understand that for construction, but it would be nice if the residents living in behind there had an opportunity to walk out there, somebody's go across the park and let them go.
So what, what you're seeing right now is construction fencing, and that's safety.
No, I, I, I understand, but I mean, this is the finished part.
The, the requirement for the solid fencing is a land use by law requirement of the town of Bridgewater. So I'm not one to be able to change that, because I'm trying to comply with all of the, the land use by law under which I'm applying.
No, it's just a complaint of mine.
You can take it up with the town of Bridgewater.
Nick and I will talk. No, it's, it's a great, and the neighborhood really endorses it, and we welcome you up there. Everybody, everybody on the street's happy that you're coming up there. We are really, yeah.
Council Graves.
So just a comment and question, I guess the comment would be it's the best store because you have the best sales team. That's, that's why, it's the best store. Good job on your land.
A little fact is that Amanda's store was given the top store across Canada in April out of eleven hundred competitors. So you do have the best store.
I know we do. The second thing is, is in regards to the town of Bridgewater, we are doing everything we, in our power to reduce energy consumption or greenhouse gases. So is this a green building, or how green is the building? Just curious.
Sure. The building is not a LEED certified building, but we put a lot of green elements into our building. It is all LED lights inside and out. We include bike racks so that people can bike there and don't have to drive there. We have the insulation from the energy code in the roof and the ceiling of the building.
Any other questions? I did pass by the Eastern Distribution Center on the weekend, and if you need a place to move that, or if you wanted to build a new one, we've got plenty of place in our space in our industrial park, so happy to accommodate that as well. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does any member of the public wish to speak? Mr. Hurdle, no? Nothing, okay. We'll close this hearing and ask for council's direction. Nick, did you want to say anything else? No, good, okay.
Yeah, worship, I moved that town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the proposed concurrent amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use by law as contained in appendix A of document eighteen dash zero six three B.
Wonderful. Do we have a seconder? Council Graves? Ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. So next steps, the decision will be published. We'll start the clock on a fourteen-day appeal period, and change takes effect once that period has lapsed without appeal. Congratulations, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to follow the course of the last challenge.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah. I bet. All right, we've got one more item under planning, Smart Cities Challenge Grant. CAO want to tee that up?
Sure.
Okay.
So last week, we were pleased to learn that the town of Bridgewater was selected as finalist in the Infrastructure Canada Smart Cities Challenge. Staff will be working on assembling our approach to this project, we anticipate. Our submission's going to be due for December. We're scheduling a meeting with Infrastructure Canada staff, looks like it's going to be next Wednesday, to find out when we get the money, how we spend it, et cetera. So we are looking for, because we're going to be coming into the summer period where there's limited council meetings, we're looking for authority for the CAO to approve expenditures in a court to council to ensure that we're able to execute our work for this submission in a timely manner.
Okay. Council like to put a motion on the table, and then we'll have a, any questions or discussion? Council McDonald.
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater authorize the chief administrative officer to approve expenditures with the unbudgeted two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Smart Cities Challenge finalist grant in order to meet the contest and project timeline and deadlines, and direct staff to provide counsel with a monthly update on the Smart Cities Challenge final grant application, including authorized expenditures.
Perfect. Do we have a seconder? Council Fugier, thank you. All ready for the question, or do you want to have some discussion?
Question.
Good, okay, all right. Ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. Moving along, we're under a time crunch here tonight, I understand. We have a bit of a power issue at eight o'clock. But take your time. So SoShore Tourism Cooperative has, have sent us a request for some funding, I believe. Do you want to take that at all, or no, it's pretty straightforward?
Well, if you want to refer to staff for, because there isn't a budgeted amount for this, we can come back and report, but it's, it's a little, the council.
Yeah, it's up to you. Little discussion?
Yeah.
Council McInnes, go ahead.
My stance on this has been very consistent. Unless or until there is a room levy brought in, which would support tourism in this area, I really don't want to waste our staff's time if I have absolutely no intentions of supporting.
And I'm the same way. It should be industry-driven. And industry is putting money in, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that's the ask.
Pardon?
Industry is being asked to put money in, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars per location.
My understanding is there have been some very positive discussions going on with regard to a marketing levy, and I think it's, from what I understand, relatively imminent. It may take a few more months or so to, to iron out, but.
Well, with all due respect, and I, I believe you when you say that, and I think there is good intentions, I heard the same story seven years ago.
Fair enough, all right. So what would council like to do with this? We should, we should, we should probably respond in some form, but just that we're not, we're not interested at this point in time until the marketing levy is in place, perhaps?
That would be my position, that would be mine as well.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay? All in favor for the most part, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, we'll, we'll do that. We'll send a little bit of correspondence off to the SoShore Tourism Cooperative. You've got some reports and recommendations, policy, boy, I wish I would have worn my glasses, eighty-nine, fees amendment for surcharges work for individuals. Yes, Ms. Kaiser, go ahead.
This arose as a result of a discussion between the town engineer and myself, just feeling, back in, in June two thousand and seventeen, when the fees policy was approved, there's a ten percent administrative surcharge on work for individuals, so if the engineering department goes out and does work for a member of the public. And just in recent discussions between Larry and myself, on a large job, ten percent can be quite significant and probably overstates the administrative burden. So we had discussed capping the administration fee at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on these. They're not frequent, so the large jobs, I mean, are not frequent. So there wouldn't be a huge budget implication.
Okay. Council, wish to make a motion or put a motion forward on that, for that?
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amended policy eighty-nine as presented in document eighteen dash zero eight seven as policy for the town of Bridgewater effective immediately.
Do we have a seconder? Council Thorburn, thank you.
So there wouldn't be any changes in the budget?
No, nothing significant.
Any other questions, comments? No? Ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. All right, moving right along. Lindbergh County Senior Safety Program, report from May twenty eighteen. Just for information, any discussion on that? No? Good, okay. Item nine point three, land purchase purchases, St. Philip's Street and York Street. I assume this is?
Me.
You?
Sure.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So this is just bringing two reports, both of these purchases have been to council, discussed in camera, we've received directions and been back and forth on them. These are to finalize the directions, though, and authorize us to expend the funds, so it's formalizing of the purchases.
Okay. Need a motion for that? Council Thorburn.
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater authorize execution of agreements to purchase lands situated at St. Philip's Street, PID six zero zero two-three-eight-seven-six, at a price of one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars, consisting of seventy thousand dollars in cash and a tax receipt for fifty-two thousand dollars. And to purchase land situated at York Street, PID six zero three-eight-two-eight-four-three, at a price of forty-five thousand dollars plus HST. And the funding, that the funding be from the capital reserves for the cash portion of these purchases.
Do we have a seconder? Council Fugier, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Ready for the question?
Questions.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. Item nine point four, recommendations of the Board of Police Commissioners, citizens appointment. Pretty straightforward? Yes? We'll entertain a motion, Council Graves.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners, and appoint Fay Patte to the commission for a three-year term beginning September two thousand and eighteen.
Perfect. Do we have a seconder? Council McDonald, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Good choice? All right. Ready for the question?
Questions.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. Item nine point five.
Nine point four.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip that? I apologize.
So I'll do that as well.
Sorry, thank you.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners, and confirm the appointment of Virginia Oracle for a term ending October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Perfect. Do we have a seconder? Thank you, Council Thorburn, another good choice.
Great choice.
Ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. Now, nine point five, request for quote for Bridgewater Waste Water Treatment Plant belt filter press replacement. Tim, are you going to give us an explanation of what that is? Do we need to know?
I tried to read it.
That turns it off, okay, sorry. The belt filter press basically removes solids from the wastewater treatment plant and dewaters it so that we're, we're just taking solids and not water. It reduces our shipping cost and reduces our disposal cost. So the belt press is twenty-five years old, and we're going through the process to find a appropriate replacement.
Sounds fascinating, that's probably all the detail we want. Anyone want to put a motion on the floor for that? Council Fugier?
Yes. That town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and approved the pre-selection of the equipment RFQ one-seven-zero-eight-zero-two dot zero-two-Q-one, Bridgewater Waste Water Treatment Plant Belt Filter Press Replacement to Andritz Separation Technologies, Inc., and for the purchase of manufacturer's shop drawings at a cost of ten thousand plus HST.
Do we have a seconder? Council McDonald, thank you. Any further questions?
This is for the drawings, and then you got to buy the unit, which is like a quarter of a million dollars, right?
So what, what we've done with this is we've done, we've gone through a pre-selection process. So because these pieces of equipment are quite complicated, and because knowing exactly what piece of equipment you have allows you to do a better design, what we do with this is we work for quotation, allows us to pre-select the equipment, and allows our design engineering firm to design based on that specific piece of equipment to work for a tender at a later date where the winner of the tender process purchased the equipment and installs it as part of the final, as part of the final construction.
Any additional questions? No, ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. All right. Proposed amended chapter one fifty-six Town Property Bylaw. Mr. Brown, is that you? Pretty straightforward? Could be you.
Okay, staff has identified a few, a few housekeeping amendments to the, to the town property bylaw. In addition, and, and that was just with, with some staffing changing, changes. In addition, the, the vending in, in public places under the, the existing bylaw, business shall not be transacted in public places or on town property other than through the vending bylaw or boutours out of shipyards landing. So additions were made to that part to give our chief administrative officer the authority to permit business within our parks, essentially if they are providing public benefit, so. And those, those uses that may not be captured in the vending bylaw. So the vending bylaw is typically for food vendors, perhaps some merchandise, in selective parks. This will allow the town to permit exercise classes and/or, you know, kayak canoe rental from one of our riverside parks. The, the rest are mostly administrative changes.
Okay. We have a motion, and then we'll have any questions, discussion? Council Fugier?
Yes, that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the intent of the amended chapter one fifty-six Town Property Bylaw as per document eighteen dash zero nine-two, and proceed to second meeting of the bylaw at council meeting to be held on July ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and authorize staff to public, all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of Municipal Government Act.
Perfect. Do we have a seconder? Council Graves, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Ready for the question? Question's been called, all those in favor? Those against, motion is carried. Item nine point seven, proposed amendment to chapter one nine seven vendor, vending bylaw. Mr. Brown, do you have anything else to explain on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Changes to the vending bylaw include the addition of three parks, Vichy Miska Park, King Street Court. King Street Court, and Riverside Park. Those areas that vending can occur through the vending bylaw with the appropriate vending permit. Additionally, the removal of the schedules from the bylaw. And that, that's being done just because when, when the schedules were put in place in the areas identified within the parks, it's just through some, some administration of the bylaw, it's come to light that vendors come in different shapes and sizes, and those areas that have been identified within those, those parks aren't always the best areas. So, staff's looking for a little bit more flexibility to work case by case to, to ensure that the vendors have a, have a good location within the areas.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Counsel McDonald?
I would move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the amended Chapter one nine seven vending bylaw as per Document eighteen dash zero nine four, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on July ninth, two thousand eighteen, and authorize staff to public, authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section one six eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Wonderful. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Graves, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor, those against. Motion is carried. All right. Business arising, unfinished business. We have a grants organizations item that was carried over. We requested additional information from, from Senior Wheels, and I think we've got that. So, I don't think there's any further explanation needed. No?
I'll put a motion on the floor just to get some discussion.
Sounds good. Thank you, Counsel Graves.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants Organization Committee and award $3,500 operating grant to Senior Wheels.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Fugier, thank you. Questions, discussion?
Great organization. They do have problems with their operating every year, but they do have a substantial amount of money in the bank that they can probably draw from. I made this motion not knowing I was going to vote for it. Counsel Graves indicated that they do have a substantial amount of money in, in their bank account. That was a request that was given to them. It was for capital, as I understand it, and like all organizations, most of the volunteers in that organization have, you know, well, I have taught my head gray hair. And raising money nowadays for capital is very, very difficult. This grant is for operating, and they would like to keep that for future purchases. And I understand a new bus is in today around $80,000. It probably might be a little more when they decide to purchase. But raising money, that kind of money, having that money in the bank will sustain that service for a long time. And it is an important service for our town and the surrounding communities. And so, I'll be supporting the motion.
Any further discussion? Counsel Thorburn?
I was down to see Earl Lance the other day just to her visit, and that was actually started back in nineteen sixty-two, so it's been around for a long while. And, like Counsel McInnes, it's, it's an operating expenditure, and I will be supporting that motion in favor.
Anyone else? Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, those against. Motion is carried. New business, La Havre River Fountain. You, okay. Give us an overview of La Havre Fountain.
So, through the chair to council, recently council had, a member of councilor had asked for some updated historical costs on maintaining and operating the, the floating fountain on La Havre River. In your report, you'll see that there's kind of two components, the electrical, which is what it costs each year for the electricity to run it, and the maintenance component. Total costs are a bit over $10,000 a year, pretty much every year. And the fountain's operating right now, and so I brought this forward for your information, and leave it to the will of council to decide what to do with it.
Any discussion or questions of the CAO?
I can get you started. I was surprised, a little bit surprised at what it has costed over the years for this fountain. I originally was very, very much a favorable investor. I would suggest that we obviously keep the fountain in the river for the rest of this year, and during budget discussions, and next year, that's something we should have on, on the agenda to talk about.
Okay. Anyone? Counsel McDonald?
I think it's on its final repair for me. The, the maintenance, because the electricity, you know, it goes up and down, and that is what it is. That's part of the expected cost. But the maintenance costs are, they're, they're, they're huge. They're, they're a lot more than I, I expected them to be, and for it to be over $10,000 a year. I love the fountain. It looks fantastic. It really does add a feature to the town. But over $10,000 a year is an awful lot for a looks pretty. I think there are a lot of services that we can provide to residents that might make life easier for that kind of money over a ten-year period.
Okay. Counsel Fugier?
Yeah. So, last year, we replaced the motor, and I'm just, was that the first time for that type of repair, for the replacement? Since, I guess, two thousand, two thousand eleven was the first year, just looking back on the maintenance costs.
Through, through the chair to council, my understanding is yes, that was the one time that we've replaced the motor. They've been generally different lumps of fixes over time, so different things have occurred. That was the first time it was a replacement motor.
Is staff happy that, that this is the right pump for the, for the river? Are we, is there an expectation that there's going to be problems coming up down the road, or is this, is this pump kind of solve that problem?
So, through, through the chair to council, and Tim might be able to take this a little bit further, but, so generally, the, the equipment that was purchased in the day, it would appear that operating in a moving river environment as opposed to a lake or a pond is stressful for it. However, to replace it, we would likely be looking at a fairly substantial new purchase. So, you know, I don't think we can state that, you know, it's a robust piece of equipment. It's, you know, based on its history and its trend, I think we can expect that it's going to continue to break, and we'll fix it. Things are going to happen. And the question will be, most likely, a budget. Is council prepared to continue to spend $10,000 to $15,000 a year towards that fountain, or is there alternative means to achieve those objectives or other, other savings? Because we don't know when the next break would really be.
Mr. Hilt, anything to add?
The only real involvement I've had with the fountain is, is a little bit of dialogue that's gone on in the engineering office. If the fountain was put in in two thousand eleven, it means it has seven years of running time on it in a relatively harsh environment. My expectation is probably it's at least halfway through its service life. So, you know, the expectations would be for more maintenance, probably not less in the second half of this cycle.
Okay.
So, this will be isolated or highlighted when we do the budget discussions?
Certainly can be. Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Kaiser has, has noted that, so, yeah.
Do we have any budgeted for future repairs? Because history kind of suggests that it's not going to, that we'll probably have more this year.
I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's got a distinct line item, or it's covered by a general public works line item. Don, do you know?
There is, there is a specific budget for King Street Court, which would include the fountain.
Okay.
But it would include other things, too. I'm not sure that mowing would be one of them, but those sorts of things.
Okay. What is council, oh, sorry, Counsel McDonald?
Would it be, would it be possible for us to say, you know, if there were another motor, that would come to council, right? Or would it not? Like a large expenditure?
I'm just trying to think what the authority level, I actually assume that that sort of level would have, could happen in staff. So, if council wants to put a limit, I mean, we don't know what the next failure could or would be. Council could do that. But on the flip side, if it went down, and council did that, we wouldn't be able to fix it till we had a council hearing. So, it would be my suggestion that it's looked at during budget. But certainly, if it's the will of council to cap what we spend on it this year, we could do that.
Counsel Thorburn?
It would seem reasonable to me that they have a maintenance budget for that. As long as they're in the budget, fine. But if the government outside of that, then you have to get authority from somebody.
Sure.
Just common sense.
Okay. So, what's the wish of council? Do you want to put a motion on the floor for this to define an amount, or, or just it's for information, and we'll see how the summer goes?
Question. Do we actually have a budget for that fountain? I would be shocked if we did.
I'm just looking at it right now, and we have a budget for King Street Courts, which includes equipment operation and maintenance. It includes electrical services. It includes materials, which would be for the whole park there. But certainly, the electrical services there are for the fountain. So, the fountain expenses are included in the park budget for King Street Courts.
How much is that total budget line item?
Twenty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars for King Street Courts. And there's salaries in it. There's mowing costs, equipment rentals, which would be our vehicle charges, equipment operation and maintenance, which would probably be mainly for the fountain, materials, electrical services.
Counsel Thorburn?
Don, while you're at that, do we know what's been spent year-to-date so far?
To date, it's about $2,900. But I'm assuming that the bill for the repair to the fountain is not in here yet.
So, the, the last repair wasn't costly. It was fairly minor, actually. It was just time.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Counsel, what would you like to do? Just take that for information and move on?
I think information and certainly budget time has to be on agenda.
Okay, we'll tag it for the budget discussion. Okay. All good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the message should be that we don't want to spend a lot of money on that fountain this year.
Yeah, I think we all...
I think it's good just to recap sort of what, what the history was and what, what expenses we've had to date.
Okay. Perfect. All right, that's the last agenda item. So, we've got two in-camera items under contract negotiations that we need to meet for next door, I believe. So, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Thank you, Counsel Thorburn. Counsel is closed tonight.
Oh, good. Edit it, but they're giving you.
Yes.
No, Pat and I sit on the committee in general, so, yeah. So, we have food trucks. We have some, it hasn't come up, but food questions.
True.
Okay. Okay, so, did you have to address it for the food truck party that they had the long weekend in May? Was that, that was on King Street between, between Dominion and the Roadhouse, and they had about half dozens?
I didn't hear about it.
Okay. Okay. I can bring it up tomorrow night at the meeting with the, yeah.